We should treat them nicer. Don't give them a hard time. I would like to call to order the June 15, 2021 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you would kindly call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
Present.
Peter Pivko.
Here.
Deborah Range.
Here.
Anstrich Perez-Dello.
Here.
John Hicksonball. Let the record reflect it, John Hicksonball is not present.
All right, the next order of business is approval of the May 18, 2021 minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them? Are there any proposed changes? And if not, I'll look for a motion for approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is the report of the planning staff.
Evening, board members. Can you get me my mask on?
Please take your mask off. I can't hear you at all. I'm so sorry.
I will take it off. It's update since our last planning board meeting. Quick update. City Commission approved this item at the May 3, 2021 meeting. And by 5-0 vote, and you guys, Planning Board approved it on March 16. By 4-0 vote. This was Banyan K parking garage. You remember, we had a crowd about the applicant wanting to cover removal condition that required them to cover the parking spaces on top of the garage. After some discussion and a continuation at Planning Board, applicant did come back and decided to basically cover all the parking spaces and the board did take the recommendation of the sales. This case was approved in June 1, 2021 by 5-0 vote of City Commission. And Planning Board approved in April 20, 2021 by 6-0 vote. And again, this was Casa Mara, 3111 South Dixie, which is for a major amendment to amend the condition limiting the restaurant square footage to allow for non-residential conversion for a minor amendment process. And they also waived amendment to parking waiver request to 49 spaces. And that concludes the cases that's been heard by the City Commission since the last Planning Board meeting. You have any questions?
Okay, any questions of staff? All right, thank you so much. And next on our agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. That then brings us to the declaration of ex parte communications. And let me begin by disclosing that I met with the applicant on Planning Board case numbers 1624BB, 1624CC, and 1624DD. Nothing we discuss will prevent me from deciding this case solely upon the evidence presented this evening. Does anyone else have anything to disclose?
Do I have telephone conversation regarding case 1624BB, CC, and DD? But my decisions will be based on the information presented tonight.
Thank you.
I have none.
Andre, anything to disclose?
I was contacted by the applicant to have discussions, but I was unable to be a part of that conversation, so I did not have any ex parte communication.
All right, that then brings us to the public hearing portion of our meeting and the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you. Next on the agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That will then bring us to Planning Board case number 1624BB, CC, and DD. I think we're going to hear first from the applicant.
Correct. Good evening. Kent Tuma with Urban Design Studio. My address is 610 Clemada Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33401. I've been sworn in. Here this evening on behalf of ECI, who's the property owner of a piece of property, 4.15 acre piece of property located within the land of Presidents along Presidential Way. The request this evening is to request the ability to have a multifamily development of 191 units located within the project. Just a little bit of background, because it's important. This piece of property's been in a lot of history over time through the land of Presidents. This subject site was originally approved back in 2007. Some of you were on the commission or on the committee at that time for a building of 288 units and almost an 18-story building for a total of 771,000 square feet. The proposal today is a significant difference. It's an eight-story building and it's 191 units. I have about a 10-point PowerPoint presentation to walk you through. There's been a lot of neighborhood outreach and a lot of community involvement in this project. And I also know that the president of the PWA is here today and he will speak, and hopefully in support of the project. So here's a subject site located in red. It's in the land of Presidents. It's 4.15 acres. It's just south of the Banyan K RPD. It's existing tennis courts that have been there for many years. Here's a little bit more detail for those of you who've been within the land of Presidents. This is the Washington, the Lincoln, and the Jefferson, all 20-story towers adjacent to the site, which is 4.15 acres. And then here's a blow-up of the site, the existing old tennis courts. And then the development site that used to be part of the golf course. It's interesting and important to note that it does frame both the 18th Green and the 10th Tee. The architect who's in the audience, Ms. Jeremy with RJL, spent a lot of time looking at the design to make sure that it frames the golf course and that the balconies and the design of the project really relates to the golf course itself. So there are many items in front of you for approval this evening. I'm going to do them all together. Mr. Roach, I know, will correct me if I do anything wrong. But the first one is a request to change the land use for multifamily to commercial east that will make it consistent with the Banyan K CPD. The next item is a rezoning, ultimately to rezone the current zoning, which is RPD, based on the historic approval back in 2007, to get to CPD or commercial plan development. Now, for the residents in the audience and listening, commercial plan development sounds scary, but there will not be any commercial on this site. The design guidelines, which is the next subject of the next request, actually allow this site only to be residential. You can see identified in the major plan development, the design guidelines allow it to be residential only. So we're amending the RPD and the master plan and design guidelines to increase the overall area of the Banyan K development. We're adding a new permissible building area, PBA 8. And then we're creating a new pod, Pod E. Also, we're requesting two waivers. The two waivers, the first waiver is for height. The second waiver is for a reduction in parking, both consistent of what surrounding approvals have been, ultimately allowing for the development of 191-unit multifamily development. Now, this is a lot of words, so I'm going to walk you through some pictures and kind of explain everybody what's happening. So today, this is the Banyan K development. It's a commercial east land use. Our site, located here on the right-hand side, is multifamily, meaning it's allowed to go up to 32.27 dwelling units per acre, exactly the same density, same number of housing as the commercial east property at 32.27 per acre. We're requesting to modify that, though, to a commercial east land use to be consistent with the Banyan K CPD. Ultimately, our goal is to incorporate that within the Banyan K CPD. In front of you is the existing boundary of Banyan K. Our property will come up in red. And our request, as part of the modifications for the rezoning, is to include it into the boundary of the Banyan K CPD. So a little bit of history, and it's important on this site. Back in 2007, as I started this conversation, this was approved for a major building. That building was 288 units. It was 193 feet of height, as the code allows. It was actually 213 feet of height to the top of the actual building itself. It had a total floor area of 771,000 square feet within that 4.14 acres and had a gross density of 69.4 units per acre. Today, you can't request that type of development. The code's been changed. You're restricted to request the 32.27 dwelling units per acre. But this was the building, this was the site plan that was here in 2007. Identified in red is that building. And then in a picture view, this is what that building looked like. That building was approved, as I said earlier, in 2007. However, its site plan approval through extensions, I believe, was valid through almost 2015. At that time, the developer went, the developer lost the property. Our client purchased the property several years ago. And now is requesting development for multifamily. But this, this plan is no longer valid, and you can't even request for this large of a development today. So the request is, as I said earlier, it's an eight-story multifamily building with 191 units. We're providing 263 parking spots and also six electric vehicle charging stations. That's been a big change over the last couple of years. You're seeing more charging stations come into it. And then also, there'll be ride-share parking spaces. And I learned our architect, Jeremy, is in the audience today. We're also having something called an Uber lounge in the design of the building, which I'll show you in detail. But in essence, it's like a business center, a place to sit and be able to look out and see when your Uber's there in your ride-share spot. So why are we asking to become part of Banyan K? So the existing project, the way the density and intensity is allowed today, we're allowed to request 133 units. However, when we incorporate into the Banyan K CPD, we're able to utilize the unused density within the Banyan K CPD to achieve 191 units, which is our goal and our development program within the site. How do we get there? How do we, how do we work our way through that? Well, we work our way through that with a significant amount of public outreach. The applicant, both the owners, and I want to give Mr. Miller and Mr. Stover some credit. They have spent a tremendous amount of time working with the PWA or the Presidential Way Association. On the screen are five dates where we've officially met. But they've met through this project continually for the last couple of years, working their way through the PWA. And I know that the president is here this evening. And I think he will speak in support of the project. We have been working diligently with them. They've also engaged through their property manager. They've also engaged Mr. Herring, who's in the audience, to help review the plans on their behalf. So they have taken an active role of being part of the design of this project. I'm going to walk you through the design. I'm going to show you where we started. I'm going to talk about some public benefits and how we got to where we are. So this was the original proposal that we came forth with to the PWA. We had two buildings. They were six stories, a little bit shorter than what we're proposing. But there were two buildings with more density than we are asking for today. And working with the PWA, their comments were, and it made sense, that we should probably aggregate these into one building. So what we originally proposed, identified on the screen in red, were two separate buildings, identified in red on the screen in front of you. Working with them, working with the, develop with the community, we agreed that it made more sense to merge it into one building. Here's the one building that's on the screen in front of you, identified in red. I have a series of perspectives that I'm going to walk you through to talk about architecture and the design of the building, and of course landscaping. So this is a proposed site plan. It's a little bit blurry on the screen. But just to give you a couple of quick bullet points of the plan, you'll notice that there's a porticus share here. This is the main entry into the community. Now, I'll blow up in more detail. And then this is the resort-style pool in the back. We have a really neat outdoor kitchen to create, outdoor activities. And then internal in the building, of course, there's all the amenities you would expect in a resort-style community, because this is adjacent to the Banyan K. It will include a yoga room, fitness rooms, indoor kitchen, and all the amenities that a renter would potentially want within Banyan K. So this is a little bit more blow-up on the site plan itself. This plan, actually, let me back up one slide. This plan identifies the entrance sequence coming in. There's entrance sequence, there are existing royal palms within the right-of-way. We're going to be adding magnolias to really create a nice buffer within that area. And then also significant sivers coming into the entry point. And then most importantly, working with your staff and the community to the south, there's a large existing strangler fig there that we've kept. It's, I believe it has a 60-inch trunk width, so we designed around that. Just a blow-up of the site plan with the landscaping shown. Our landscape architect, Mr. Whelan, Mr. Dante from Mr. Whelan's office is here, so he can respond to any questions that you have on that matter. We've created significant buffers to the north, to the west. But we've limited the buffer to the golf course, obviously, as we wanted to be very interactive and visual. This is a view of the building. We've removed the landscape, so this isn't what it's going to look like. There's much more landscaping. There's royals that come all the way down. There's some oak trees that terminate and all these islands. But the idea here is to kind of give you an idea or a feel of what the architecture's going to look like. You can see the layer of the stone on the first two floors. And the idea here is to create a mix, so you have some eye, some visual aspects. And then you have the scored, you have the lap board here. And then you have the board and batten on the top with the barrow tile roof. The idea here is to create that British West Indies architecture to be somewhat consistent with across the street at the golf course. It is, it is going to be a very nice change for the community as it's going to bring the architecture view up significantly as you drive up and down Presidential Way. Here's another view. This is the 18th Green again, and then the 10th Tee is over here. You'll see the visual, the ability of the shadowing and how the trees are going to work. This is an outdoor terrace on the rooftop facing, I guess that direction would be south. And this is a letter we've received. And again, Mr. Gill will present his own position. I'm sure Mr. Herring will get up and discuss this on our working together through this project. But we've agreed to a couple of things and to create some public benefit for the neighbors. First thing, and the most important part of this is, they ultimately say we're in conceptual agreement with the plans presented, however, withdraw any formal final approval of the plans until such time. So the key thing here, we've done a couple of community items. One, we're becoming part of the PWA, which is an important financial component for the neighborhood, so these units will participate within that. Number two, we're also reconstructing the gatehouse to the north. They have a very tight gatehouse. For those of you who've been in the community, there's not much stacking. Our traffic engineer, Mr. Kelly, is here. He can articulate that in detail if we need more information. But the existing gate is right here. We're going to be relocating that gatehouse further in to create a significant amount of stacking, have the ability for the gates to be here, allow for a turnaround for those who come, so they, if they go to the wrong spot or they can't get in, they have the opportunity to get out. That does not exist today. And then also, the developer will be funding and constructing a gatehouse. This is conceptual, but very close to the details that we're working out with Mr. Gill. We have to work out a little bit on the walls on this side on how the height's going to work. There's some elevation things that we're working through. But that is one of the other benefits that we're providing for the community in exchange to allow for this development. And it shows how working together could create something very special for the community. We do have two waivers. Those two waivers I indicated earlier. The first one is height. The height waiver request, the code in this area is 40 feet. Our request for that waiver is a 53 1/8 inch waiver in regards to the ultimate building height of 93 feet of height. And that, that's compatible as you look at the surrounding area, where you have the large towers around the general area. And the second reduction, or the second request, is in regards to parking. If you're east of I-95 within the city of West Palm Beach, you're allowed to request a reduction of 30% parking. We're requesting 29, so it's close enough to 30%. But we're requesting a reduction in parking of 29%. As part of that, we're required to do a traffic, a submittal for the traffic study. Again, Mr. Kelly prepared a traffic study two ways to meet the ITE manual for traffic. There are two types of studies. He did both of them. We passed on both of them significantly. And on the one that actually does it by bedroom counts, we had 60 additional parking spaces. So the request to reduce to 30% parking is valid and consistent with what you've done on other projects that are east of I-95. And I have more details on that. I'm going to just show you two more pretty pictures of the building, and then I'll pull the thank you slide back up. So this is another view of the building that our architect worked very diligently on. And then here's another view of the building. Again, all the landscaping's been removed so you can see the building. And with that, I would like the opportunity reserved the right to come back after a public comment. And I have lots of slides that go into detail, but I thought tonight to kind of leave this big picture. We've been working hand-in-hand with the association. And I hope we have their support this evening. We have your staff recommendation of approval. And when I come back, I'll ask for your recommendation too. Thank you, sir.
Any questions of the applicant? Let me start on this. Andre, any questions? Deborah, now this time?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm very glad that the designs have progressed to what you showed tonight. I was concerned with the original designs because it looked dated even before you started.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm happy.
Thank you. And our architect, Jeremy, if you'd raise your hand, sir? There he is. He knows about Uber rooms too, so we're all good. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Can we hear from staff?
Good evening. For the record, John Roach, principal planner for the city. I feel like Mr. Tuma pretty much covered all the details with regards to the project, so I'm not really going to go into all of that. There's just a couple of things that I want to touch on. One is with regards to the waiver to the height. I just want to clarify that it's, the code is different in the sense that there is a maximum of 40 feet, but you can go higher than that if you provide additional setbacks from the side and the rear property lines. So really, it's based upon the location of their building that limits them to 40 feet in height, and they are requesting to go taller. Had they provided the additional setbacks, they could have built a building of 93 feet that they are proposing. So just want to clarify that. It's really in relation to the setbacks that they're proposing. And those setbacks that they are not meeting are adjacent to the golf course primarily. It's the golf course and then also the property to the south. So that's where the basis for the waiver is coming from. The other is with regards to, one of the concerns that staff expressed with this concept and this proposal that came before us was, as Mr. Tuma indicated, converting it to a general commercial zoning designation and making it part of a commercial plan development. One of the requirements to do that and to have the commercial east future land use is that all of the properties within that designation, within that master plan community, need to be integrated. Now, that's not defined, but you know, functionally speaking, one would think that that would be pedestrian connections, vehicular connections, use-wise, and so forth. So it's an overall community development and not two separate developments that happen to be part of one plan. So we really tried to focus with them on how this site, on the other side of Presidential Way, was going to be integrated into the rest of Banyan K. They've done that through the pedestrian connections, through the vehicular connections, through the golf cart paths and so forth. They're exploring the options that residents will have, the opportunity to do memberships within the club and so forth. We do want to continue to work with them on how that actually looks out on the site. You know, how can we delineate these connections and separate them from the rest of PWA, but show cohesiveness between Banyan K as one master development? You know, whether that's through pavement, you know, texture markings and, you know, striping and signage and so forth to have that consistent theme. So we really want to emphasize that integration of this site into, into the rest of the development. So again, we felt like those things are important to meet the requirement of the comp plan of this integration. We feel like they're achieving that, but you know, we want to continue to work with them on how to further that development. So. That really concludes staff's presentations. We are recommending approval of all the applications that are before you, subject to the conditions that were in the staff report. We don't have any changes to those conditions. You will need to motion on each one individually. And I'm happy to go over any particular items or conditions you feel necessary, so.
Okay, any questions of staff? Peter? Any questions? Deborah? Andre?
I guess I'm curious about the waiver of those, of the height of the building. So if they had reduced or increased their setbacks, I mean, how would that have affected the, the site plan? I guess we won't, we won't see that, but that's my only...
You know, I want to add, because that was my exact question as well. Are you saying, John, that they could have relocated the same building somewhere else on the site and it would not require a waiver?
Potentially, yes. I mean, they could have changed the shape of the building and the location of the building to meet those additional setbacks and built a building of 93 feet tall. It's not that buildings of that height are prohibited within that zoning district. It's a relationship between the setbacks and the, and the building height themselves. So the two areas in which they're not meeting that additional setback are along the golf course and along the south property line. So they would have had to provide that additional setback in those areas to account for the additional height, and they are requesting a waiver from that.
I'm a little surprised, I guess, is some, that's a pretty, pretty big ask and not to impose that restriction. Then I just wonder, what's the purpose of having the setback requirements and the height restrictions relative to them? Does that make sense?
I think the question is, if I understand it, is presumably the setbacks requirement serve a purpose. What are we missing here? I think I know what your answer's going to be, but is that your question? In other words, we have setback requirements for a reason. What is being lost by waiving them here to allow this taller building?
So the purpose, the primary purpose is, the concept is, is that, okay, for a taller building, you want the building to be further away from the adjacent properties. This building is primarily fronting onto a golf course. So really, one of these two areas doesn't have any additional impact because it's open space. And actually, there's a deed restriction that it remain as a golf course for a number of years. So you'll never see develop on, on, I don't want to say never, but for an extensive period of time, you won't see development on that golf cars, golf course parcel. You know, there is adjacent, adjacent development to the south, but it kind of sits closer to Presidential Way and not necessarily adjacent to where this building is being placed. So what it does is it allows, by requesting the waiver, it gives them flexibility with regards to the placement of the building on the site, orientating it to the golf course and allowing it to follow the curvature of the road and so forth. As opposed to, you know, doing a taller, you know, it would have probably had to been taller to meet those additional setbacks. You would have ended up with something similar to what you see out in Presidential Way now, where it could get up to 20 stories and so forth, but it's skinny. So they've chosen to go with a more of a mid-rise building that is spread more out. But they still need the, based upon that placement, they still need that waiver. Some other projects where we've done that, things to think about are like Reibovich, the Bristol, and so forth, where we've granted these setbacks/height waivers to orient the building in a better location than maybe what the code would have provided.
Okay. That's all. I was curious.
I shared that question as well. All right, thank you so much. At this point, we're going to hear from the public. I have three cards from Howard Rosker, Ryan Gill, and Donaldson Herring. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this matter that's not one of these three? If you do wish to be heard, I need you to complete a card and give it to the clerk. I'll call those people in their order. Howard Roskranz, I think, if you'll, sir, come forward to this podium. And at this other podium, if Ryan Gill can come forward. And after one of them leaves, if Donaldson Herring can take the other podium. Thank you so much. Please state your name for the record.
Sure. Howard Rosenkranz. Good to see you again, sir.
Good to see you.
Yes, I'm the property manager for the PWA, and we're here tonight. Ryan Gill, the president of the PWA as well, in support of the project. As Kent Tuma mentioned earlier in the letter of support, you know, in concept, we are in, in favor of the project. They have worked really hard with us over the last two years. Besides the official meetings, there were several Zoom meetings, given the circumstances. And they spent a lot of time acknowledging our concerns and doing major revisions, as you saw in his presentation. So again, we're just here to basically say that we do support it. We're looking forward to the project. We're looking forward to them joining the PWA team and, and going from there. And that's it. Thank you.
You so much, sir. All right. Ryan Gill? Come forward. And then lastly, Donaldson Herring, if you'll stay at the other podium.
Good evening. Ryan Gill. I'm the president of the PWA Lands of the Presidents. And I'm newly president, however.
My apologies.
Yeah, I know, right? I have been on the board since this has been started, and they have come back, we have gone back and forth and back and forth with 13 different condos in our community. And I wouldn't say it's 100% where everyone's overjoyed, but everyone was very grateful for their cooperation. And we had some concerns, and they came back and I think wowed most of us. They've done a really good job, and we're looking forward to having them come onboard with our PWA.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And sir, if you'll come forward. State your name for the record.
Good evening. Donaldson Herring with Kotler &amp; Herring, 1934 Commerce Lane, Jupiter, Florida. And just to reiterate what was stated, we're here to support the project. The PWA retained our services to work with the developer and the agent on a collaborative basis. So I would say that the process worked very well. Your staff was very helpful in providing all the necessary information that was needed. As the one councilman vice chair pointed out, the plan that's before you today is a significantly different project that was first proposed. And we... there were many, many asks of the developer. I believe, I think there was like 30 points of light is the way that we refer to it, you know, including rebuilding guardhouses and doing some fairly significant improvements and providing some fairly significant commitments. And their team, which included Kurt Whelan, who was landscape architect, listened to our concerns. They redesigned the plan. They redesigned the landscape. They redesigned the architecture, provided the articulation that we were working for, and continue to work with us. So we, over the next 30 days before this project is concluded, we're going to complete some agreements with the developer and their agent. But we would tell you that, you know, they've done a great job, and this is a project to support, and this is the way that the process should work. And as pointed out, not everybody's in 100% agreement. The PWA is not 100% happy. The agent didn't get everything that they wanted, or the developer didn't. So you know, that's a good agreement. I mean, it's agreement where... but it's agreement that I think that we can all work with. And we've set a framework to move forward in a positive direction. So we would request that you support this petition tonight. And again, big heads off to staff, to Mr. Green and Mr. Roach for their effort, because they also listen to the concerns in a very, very productive way so that we can all achieve a common goal. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to be heard on this application? And if not, I don't think we'll need a rebuttal, because I didn't hear any negative comments that you need to respond to. So at this point, we'll bring them back to the board. And let me just go down the row here. Does anyone have concerns or opposition to this?
My questions were answered.
I just want to make a couple of quick observations. My main concern was the height, and Mr. Roach's explanation really put my mind to rest on this, that really, we are not giving them additional right. We are simply helping them reconfigure the project that makes so much more sense with the land available. I do remember we had this exact issue with the Bristol. Even though this planning board did not initially support the Bristol, by the time it came back to us and was already allowed, then it made so much more sense to have it reconfigured to make better use of the parcel. It made a lot of sense to everyone. And I also want to point out that I think the process this developer followed is so admirable. How many times have we of a board have asked them, please, please, please work with the neighborhood? You know, do the outreach, invest the time, make adjustments. And it sounds like that's exactly what this applicant has done, and they are rewarded by having really full support. So I myself intend to support this. And if there's no other objection, I'll be looking for a motion, and we'll need three.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman, of case number 1624BB with one condition. Based on the findings that the amendment complies with the provisions of Chapter 163 Florida statutes under Florida Admin Code and is in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'll move approval for case number 1624CC. Based on the findings that the petition meets the required standards in Sections 94-32 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations.
Motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
And I'll move approval for case number 1624DD. Based on the findings that the petition meets the required standards in Sections 9432 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations with eight conditions.
Motion. Have we a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair, which case includes the waivers? Is that CC?
BB and DD.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Is any further discussion?
A second.
If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all. That will then bring us to Planning Board Case Number 692W. And we may hear from the applicant. We'll take a moment to let those people leave, and I'll return. Let me sign this first. Boy, all the people. Kind of clears out, obviously, huh?
And wasn't controversial, can you imagine?
14th. Thank you so much. Actually, it was 15th, I think, because I see on the... 15th of June. I'm sorry? See, we have one more. It's a planning board case, so we have two planning boards. But thank you for reminding me on that. Let me give you these cards and this thing sign. Yes, a planning board case, and we have two cool ones. Good. I need that reminder. Okay, so we're now... Do you hear? Planning Board Case Number... Which one was it? 43... 692W.
Good evening, sir.
Please state your name for the record.
My name's Gary Brandenburg. I live at 5437 Honeysuckle Court up in Palm City. Thank you this evening for your time. It's a privilege to be able to present this matter to you. I represent Mr. Hewlett, who is here in the front row. Right behind him is Frank Dowling. Frank is the chief operating officer of the facility. This project, this property, was originally built in 2004. At that time, there was a building constructed that comprised 16,772 feet, had a 5,200-square-foot warehousing facility on it. That property was annexed into the city in 2006. Then in 2011 and '12, the city approved a project on the site that's in question here tonight, and it was for a 30,165-square-foot facility. That facility was not built, and as a result of a redesign and modification, we're here before you tonight with a smaller building. The smaller building is about 22,000 square feet, 22,684, and we're adding an additional 2,520 square feet of warehousing. Together with myself tonight, we have Dustin Mizell from Environmental Design Group, and we have Rick Gonzalez from REG Architects, Adam Swainy from Ingenuity, and Natalia Lacari from Mann Associates. Mr. Mizell will present pictures of the project in a short PowerPoint. Are you ready, Dustin?
Thank you. Good evening, Dustin Mizell. On behalf of Hewlett Environmental Services, I'm with Environment Design Group, 139 North County Road, Palm Beach, Florida. As you look at the first image over here, in the background is the existing Hewlett building. In the foreground is the proposed development. Just a little location map so you can orient yourself. We're at the northwest corner there of Okeechobee Boulevard and Wakiba Way. Here's an area of the existing site condition. Really where you see the shell rock and the grass that's just depleted from all the vehicle parking is in the general vicinity of where we're going to be proposing the building. So when you look at the existing conditions plan as well, you can see it's just shell rock paving, and all the parking is to the south of that area. So what we're proposing is to take the undeveloped area, as Gary mentioned, which was previously approved, and put a smaller building there. It's about a 7,000-foot reduction from what was previously approved, and also a height reduction as well from three-story to two-story. One of the good things for the project overall is, as we're developing it, staff has come to us and said, you know, we want you to look at not just what you're developing, but the entire property there. So there's been a lot of vegetation, just through time and environment, hurricanes and just sustainability issues. It declined or kind of disappeared. So staff wanted us to work with an arborist to really analyze what was out there. What could you feasibly relocate? What can be replaced? So we did a lot of time, went through that exercise. We're very careful to do that, and I'll show you in a moment our planting plan. But here's the site plan. Again, in the top right, you see the proposed building. And the other area is going to be, in the bottom left, the south of the existing building, which would be the service bay and the warehouse area for the vehicles. In addition to that extension on the building existing and the new proposed building, it also gives the site the opportunity to bring it all into compliance. So all the new proposed parking meets City of West Palm Beach standards, the dumpster requirements, the landscape buffers, the site lighting, everything that might have been, you know, not meeting current standards. Now, the entire site is brought up to current code. The landscape plan, again, we not only addressed, you know, the foundation planting around development, we're able to reclaim the north buffer, really enhance the south buffer, all the terminal islands, you know, all the shade trees for the vehicular pedestrian access has really been enhanced. So again, the site will not be reclaimed, but it'll certainly be enhanced in a tremendous way as a result of this project. A little bit here, staff had asked us to do a little bit of a study to go back to when the original developmental plans, see what was required as far as vegetation, the landscape, and to make sure that we were not just reclaiming it, but enhancing it. So this was just a study that we had done with staff. At that point, excuse me, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Rick Gonzalez from REG Architecture. He's going to walk you through the building improvements. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Rick Gonzalez, President, REG Architects, 120 South Olive Avenue, downtown West Palm Beach. And thank you for hearing our case today. We're very excited about this project. Mr. Hewlett wanted to do a really nice building, a headquarters building. At the same time, we wanted to tie into the existing building. So we've used some of the colors of the existing building, but we've come up with a very creative design of the new structure that you see here on the rendering. The floor plan, again, as was mentioned by Gary, is a two-story building. The ground floor will be occupied as the first phase of the project, and then the second floor will be future-built out. One of the things that we worked with Mr. Hewlett was the idea of, with COVID, having some outdoor spaces. So I'm going to show you the second floor and the roof plan to show you an amenity that we haven't done recently in an office building, which is adding, in this case, we have five outdoor areas for the structure so people can go work outside, feel more comfortable with air conditioning, you know, and the situation of what we've all just been through. As you can see here in the second floor, the four... there's two large balconies on the north side, and then there's two smaller ones on the south side. They're located there. On the south side, smaller, they're more private for the tenants. On the north side, they'll be shared by the Hewlett staff and also by the tenants with door access from the staircase at the north location. And then at the rooftop, the front staircase and the elevator bring you all the way up to the roof, and that'll be that canopy that you saw, that striking canopy, is part of the covered area for enjoyment with outdoor tables and seating. The elevations here, black and white elevations, showing you the rhythm of the design, the front entry features, the balconies and the windows and the stucco trim. The side view over here, you can see the front top canopy and the entry canopy on the bottom elevation, which is on view of the east side, and the west side adjacent to the existing structure. The... as mentioned, there's also a very small addition, a service addition, you know, to take care of their vehicles. Since they built this building, they now have more vehicles. They've been very successful. In fact, I told Mr. Hewlett I was in downtown Miami the other days, and I saw a huge Hewlett sign. And it's a great graphic. As we all know, they have great graphics, and as an architect, I appreciate when people use great graphic designers in their signage too. So kudos to them. So anyways, he has more warehouse because he needs to have more service base for more trucks that he's now running up and down the coast. And then these are the last drawings. These are some really nice color renderings to show you the idea. We have a couple of placeholders. You might be looking at that and going, are those some bugs over there? And they're just placeholders. We've been talking to Doudali, who you know has done very whimsical art and public place work here in our downtown with his pipe structures, and some of it kind of looks like ants or animals and so forth. And years ago, you might have remembered an exhibit that we had downtown on Okeechobee Boulevard with the red giant ants. I'm not sure if you remember that. But that was something that I loved in person because it brought, you know, a huge scale, you know, to our downtown. So those are not the actual designs. They're just little placeholders that we put there. Mr. Doudali is in France now for the summer, but when he comes back, we're going to hopefully start working with him on the designs of the art and public places. This is a view now from the other side of the building, from the northwest, looking to the south. This is a shot of the warehouse to show you compatibility between the existing and the new. And I'll close with this picture, a night shot, you know, to show you. We've done a couple of buildings out in this area towards Royal Palm Beach. They're very well lit at night, and the idea is to be iconic, you know, so that people can recognize the Hewlett brand, the Hewlett building at this location. So if you have any questions, let me know, and I appreciate the opportunity this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on your presentation, sir?
No, sir. Thank you very much. Unless you have any questions, we're good.
Any questions of the applicant?
No.
And if not, can we hear from staff?
Good evening. My name is Alena Wooton. I'm here...
Mr. Speaker, please talk more directly in the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry. My name is Alena Wooton. I'm here representing staff in this case, this PV case number 1594C. I think the applicant did a great job of laying out their request in an effort to not be redundant. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. But in terms of the... sorry. Request for the major amendment, staff recommends approval. We find that the request complies with all of the amendment standards of Section 9432 and the site design qualitative development standards of Section 9435C of the zoning and land development regulations. I'll be happy to answer...
Any questions? No questions? I have one question, please. So just to summarize, there was a larger building already allowed to be built. Alls they have done was make it smaller, and they brought the whole property into compliance with the current code. So there only been net improvements across the board.
Right.
Okay. I have to make one observation. I've always been a admirer of Mr. Rodriguez's work, and this is no exception. I think it's a beautiful building. I really do. Okay. Anyone have any opposition? Oh, forgive me. Anyone from the public who should be heard? I know I had no cards, but I still want to go through that courtesy of asking. And if not, we'll bring it back to the board then for a motion.
I met my quota.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion for approval.
Case number 1594C with one condition.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, that then brings us to our code revision cases. And I believe we will start with code revision case 2105. Is that correct? Or is... wait, let me... forgive me. Let me just confirm that 1595C has been removed from the agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Green?
Yes, it has.
Okay. We don't need a motion, do we? Okay. So then that brings us to code revision cases. So then that brings us to code revision cases. This is page four, page five. So 2105, is that what you have is the next one?
No, 18--
Whoop.
1882A.
18.
1882A.
1882 is what I meant to say.
Thank you. For the record, Rick Green, Development Services Director, and I will be doing this presentation with Anna Ponte, our city urban designer. And what I'd like to do today is talk a little bit about our downtown incentive areas. This is a little different, and normally we would be having this discussion with our downtown action committee. But because this is a code and text amendment, certainly it needs your approval. So I will discuss some of the issues that we have been discussing with our downtown action committee for some time. I want to spend also a few minutes talking about the impacts of the pandemic on West Palm Beach and how it relates to the text amendment we have before you tonight. I'll talk about the Class A office market, the hotel market, and then we'll get into the regulation of downtown development and what we're proposing here, and then I'll ask Anna to talk about the proposed workforce housing incentive, the text amendments, and then we'll follow up with the recommendations and certainly any questions. So to provide this board with a little bit of an update, again, you don't typically see projects that come into the downtown, standalone projects. But in our downtown master plan, which is Article Four of our Zoning and Land Development Regulations, we have had incentives in place, varying times, varying degrees, for projects within the downtown. So in the Quadrial Business District, which you see highlighted in the black outline here, we have had incentives for residential developments, for Class A office buildings in excess of 200,000 square feet, and for full-service hotel rooms in excess of 200 hotel rooms. In the Quadrial Garden District, we've had additional incentives, again, for Class A office and full-service hotel, and this was, as an example, the incentive that Jeff Green took advantage of for One West Palm or 550 Quadrial. And then you may be more familiar with the Okeechobee Business District that also came before this board several years ago in an effort to incentivize Class A office in that corridor along Okeechobee Boulevard. And then we've had for some time in the Clematis Waterfront District, a boutique hotel incentive that expired in June 15th, and as part of the amendments we're discussing tonight, we would like to remove that from the downtown master plan. So let's talk a little bit about what has happened with the pandemic. I mean, we had projected, when we started working on our budget for fiscal year '21, the year we're in now, we expected, like everybody else, there would be a tremendous decrease in development. We projected a million-dollar loss in revenue, a decrease in our business tax expenses. So you see, over the last six years, this has been the average of our building permit revenues that we have received in the last three months, March, April, and May. And you compare that with what actually happened. So what happened was the pandemic just started driving people to West Palm Beach. A lot of corporations in the Northeast, particularly New York, and surprisingly California as well. And we've been working very closely with the Business Development Board, and it's been nonstop. I mean, companies moving in, bringing 500 and 600 employees from these outlying areas, not just moving within West Palm Beach area, I mean, coming from afar. So you see the percentage increase over what we've averaged the last six years has been truly phenomenal. When you look at our building permit revenues during that same six-year timeframe, we've averaged about $9.95 million. We are on pace this year to do about $11.6. And again, the three consecutive months of a million dollars in permits, we've only done once before in the history of the city. If we hit a million dollars in June, that'll be a first. So it's quite impressive as to what's been happening. And then, and then when you look at the Development Services revenues, this includes business tax, planning fees, et cetera, in comparison to where we were or where we are through May, the month of May, over the last seven years, you see that $13.3 million, it's the most we've ever collected. So not only has our building revenue gone up, but our business tax revenue is the highest it's ever been through May. So it's been quite impressive. So as you know, prior to the pandemic, we had three office buildings comprising about a million square feet of development. And I'll point out that we've had no new Class A office buildings built since 2008. One of the reasons why we pushed for the Okeechobee Business District to try to encourage and incentivize, we heard countless stories of companies trying to move to this area pre-pandemic, and there wasn't any square footage available in any of the existing office buildings. So as you are well aware, what's happened since then? Well, 360 Rosemary is getting ready to open. One Flagler will hopefully start construction by the end of the year. West Palm Point, which is part of the City Place DRI, you will see here within the next few months, they're adding almost 400,000 square feet of office. You've got One West Palm, which is now resuming construction. And now you're adding an additional $1 million on top of the $1 million that's already in place. So again, we never envisioned this, but we're basically almost doubling our square footage of Class A office building overnight. So you will see in Anna's presentation that the need for that Class A incentive isn't as urgent as it was, you know, even three or four years ago. With regard to hotels, the same story. The Ben, which opened up on the old City Hall site, the Canopy Hotel was completed within the past year. One West Palm will also have a hotel component. The Cosmopolitan was a project approved by DAC. We don't know if they'll move forward. And then the AC Marriott is going before our DAC in the upcoming months. This is the second phase of the Marriott Residence Inn Project also downtown. So here, if all of these get built and completed, now we're adding 883 rooms. So again, the need, the desire for a strong incentive for hotels isn't what it is now as it was a couple of years ago. I think we've had discussions in the past, but just to reiterate how we govern development in our downtown area. So since the late '90s, we've had a transportation concurrency exception area that is in our code, and that basically says, and it's approved by both Palm Beach County and the state, that in order for the city of West Palm Beach to build just under 15.1 million square feet of development, we have to provide 6,934 residential units. And the thought is that you've got a balance of people living and working downtown, so you need a minimum balance of residential to non-residential in order to effectuate a good control of traffic downtown. If you don't have the residential provided downtown, now everybody's commuting into the downtown, which results in more congestion. So there was a scaled approach, but I believe in 2011, we had to reach a ratio of 0.46 and sustain at least that ratio in the years to come. So the good news is that we've already hit our residential quota. We're at 7,473 units as of the end of March. We've got another 1,600 units in the pipeline downtown. So we're going to be at 9,000 units. The projects in green are under construction. The ones in black, Rosemary, The Grand, Lofton Place Phase Two, have all been approved, and we expect them to get started shortly. So we're very positive and optimistic that we'll have another 1,600. It's okay if that ratio is higher, it just can't be lower. And then on the non-residential side of the 15 million square feet, we've only built just over 10 million. So we have another capacity of 5 million square feet left to build. And what the TCEA does, it allows us to have failed intersections, failed roadway links. Certainly, we don't want that, but what we're acknowledging is that it's a downtown environment, you're going to have more traffic. But to the city's credit, you know, as you know, we've been pushing the concept of mobility and alternative modes of transportation. And then again, certainly having that residential certainly helps the fact that we don't have that congestion. And with other developments and improvements like the extension of Fern Street across the railroad tracks certainly will lessen the traffic that we're experiencing now on both Okeechobee and Banyan Boulevard. So the good news is that we have to do a report to Palm Beach County and the state every March, and our last report shows that ratio is 0.76. So we're moving in the right direction. So with regard to that 15.1 million square feet of non-residential, we can't allow more than that number anywhere in the downtown or what you see outlined in the red. We can't permit more development than what's allowed in the TCEA. But what we can do is shift that square footage from one site to the other through the concept of transfer of development rights. So we have a figure 4-35 in our downtown master plan, which identifies sending sites and receiving sites, and we're allowed to send TDRs from both historic sites and open spaces to other sites. And that allows us to preserve historic structures, historic facilities, like we did with the OBD when we designated or in the process of designating the First Christ Scientists Church, that will be retained as a historic site. The value of those TDRs today range from roughly $12 to $15 a square foot, and the city had about a million square feet in Gateway Park, and that million square feet of TDRs that we have been using to generate and assist workforce housing projects has pretty much been exhausted. We have another $1.5 million to $2 million on the private market, so somebody coming in now has to go to the private market to acquire those TDRs. So the way the special incentives work, and again, the DAC committee sees this every month, but just to explain, so I'll use the example of the Quadrial Garden District, maybe we'll use the One West Palm project as an example. So if Mr. Green wanted to come in and utilize that incentive, he would be required to build either 200,000 square feet of Class A office or 200-plus hotel rooms. His base FAR, or a developer's base FAR, would increase from 2.75, and in this case, double, to 5.5. So he would be allowed to increase the height from 10 stories to 25 stories if he did either the hotel or the office. If he did both, which he opted to do, he would be allowed to go to 30 stories, and that's the project he has now. So it kind of varies with each of the developments. You see in the Quadrial Business District, if you do a Class A, your FAR increases from 1.75 to 6.5. So they vary, and they range, in range from each district and depending on the use. But what Anna Ponte and I have been working on over the past year, the big need as we see it today is workforce that's affordable to the people who want to live and work downtown. If you look at some of the rates, and Anna will get into that, it's somewhat cost prohibitive to the average, you know, teacher, firefighter, et cetera, who wants to move downtown. So generally, I'll talk the concept and using the same example. So if you have a project that is permitted to go to 10 stories, it has an FAR of 2.75, the way we've developed this workforce housing incentive is that we would provide additional capacity. So in this example, and it's going to vary by district, but in this example, they could get an additional two stories with an FAR of 1.25, bringing the total development to 4.0 in terms of FAR. The developer, again, would have to acquire the extra TDRs for this space, for this addition in the private market. And then we would require that 27% of that total additional space would be set aside for workforce housing. Originally, when we started the concept, we were looking at a 33% set aside for a period of 20 years. We discussed this in a workshop with the mayor and the city commission earlier this year, and we discussed three options that Anna will get into in her presentation. We also looked at five recent residential projects that were recently completed downtown and tested our assumption and our methodology against those five projects to come up with a recommendation that is before you today. And then once we did that, we had three, at least three separate Zoom meetings with developers of residential projects downtown to bounce this idea. And what the developers told us at one of those meetings was that the biggest obstacle they encounter right now is not the capacity, it's not the TDRs, but it's the price of the land downtown. That was the biggest obstacle. So as part of one of our discussions, we suggested that maybe what the city and the CRA can do is offer a tax increment financing reimbursement that the developer pays, the city and county taxes, to bridge the gap between what they would be restricted to pay with the area median income restrictions and what typical market rate is. So that gap between the 60, 80, 100% of AMI compared to the rental rates, we would fund that gap for a period of 10 years. The thought being is that, once they build a project, we will now be generating income, and some of that income would be going back to them. But Anna will get into that in more detail. And then lastly, what we wanted to do is create a separate document. So once we lay out the specific program and talk about the three ways that this workforce housing incentive could be met, we would have a separate document that would be approved by resolution of the city commission. That way, every time we wanted to do a tweak, we wouldn't have to come back through a major amendment, come to the planning board, two readings of the city commission. But the bulk of what you will see will be in the zoning and land development regulations. So having said that, let me ask Anna to run you through the proposed text.
Rick, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
So the 10-year agreement--
Incentive, okay.
What keeps them, is a developer obligated to keep that in perpetuity? That it'll always be like that?
I don't want to steal Anna's thunder, but they would be required to keep those workforce units as workforce for a period of 20 years, and we would offer to provide a rebate for a period of 10 years, so half of that time.
Okay.
So in essence, they're breaking even the first 10 years of the program.
Thank you, Rick. Anna Maria Ponte, city urban designer for the record. So I'm going to explain a little bit more in detail what Rick just went of in general. As you say, we have been providing a lot of housing or building a lot of housing in the downtown area. In the last 15 years, we have been building around 226 units per year. That is a pretty good number for a city our size. We have been building buildings as large as Parkline, that is a 25-story building, but also smaller-scale buildings, or not smaller, but medium-scale buildings, like eight stories, the Broadstone City Center in downtown. However, the rent prices for these new constructions are definitely not affordable to most of the population. We consider in the area median income right now for 2021 is $80,200. And that, considering the price of rent of units in the downtown, you can see is definitely something not affordable for that income range. So we kind of did a survey of the market rate projects that had been recently completed in the downtown. We have five of them. And the average rent, for example, for a studio is $1,758. When you compare that with what is really affordable for a family that has an income between 60 and 100% of the AMI, the gap is substantial. So if you've got a family earning, making 100% of the AMI, can afford $1,500. For a studio, an average studio is $1,700. So a gap is substantial, and it goes higher as you go, the larger the unit. So considering this situation, we say, okay, we need to target this. And who is the incentive targeting? It's definitely, we target, the area median income is what we fix as 80,200 is 100% of the median income. And then we say, we need to lower it even further. So we are, our goal is to try to provide units for families between 60 and 100% of the area median income. And basically, that is family or individual making between $48,000 and $80,000. And that is basically teachers, public workers, young professionals. We did a survey of the downtown, and just downtown, the city employees, approximately 70% of the city employees are within this, are below the 100% of the AMI. Of course, this is only accounted for one individual. It may be families that, but once you put the two incomes together, they are above that, but just as a single income, they are below 100% of the AMI. So the city decides to definitely propose a housing incentive that promotes the construction of residential units below the market rate. That is our goal. So what we are proposing is a series of things. The first one is to expand the areas eligible for incentives. And as Rick explained, we have in downtown a system where we are allowed to, we allow developers to increase the development capacity and the height in certain areas where additional height is appropriate through the transfer of the TDRs program. So we are proposing using the same mechanism to identify, and we identify in addition to the areas that we already have designated as a receiving site for TDR, additional areas. And these areas are basically the areas around the TOD and the cultural art districts that are the areas within the two transportation modes that we have. So they are located between the Tri-Rail and the Bright Line Station, and they are the areas that are, the area that is most friendly for transportation, is more connected within the two train lines, is close to also the bus station on the west side of the tracks, and is also the area that is less expensive at this point. If we go closer to the water, the land is more expensive. So this area is a prime area for promoting this type of project. So as we say, as I say, the program will be eligible in all the other areas that are eligible for the incentive, we just added a little bit more to that. We also, as you remember, we added in the northwest neighborhood, in the edge of the northwest neighborhood along Banyan, we did an amendment last year that also did an increase on development capacity, so the area will also be eligible for this incentive. The second thing that we did after expanding the areas eligible for TDRs is modifying the existing affordable housing incentive program. We have an affordable housing incentive program in the downtown that basically allows additional development capacity and provides the developers city-owned TDRs. As Rick explained, we are running out of city-owned TDRs. So one of the goals of the program is basically switch entirely, the developers will have to acquire the TDRs in the private market. The current program, despite it has been in place for around 10 years or so, we have had only one project that has utilized this incentive, and the incentive is optional. So-- So, the developers will come, and if they want to do the affordable housing with, in the program that we have in place, is for families between, with income between 50 and 150% of the AMI, it had a range of how many TDRs the city will offer to them, but it was optional. We have only one project that opted to do it, and it was the Vernia Place Project, that built 85 units and produced, all the units are below 80% of the AMI. That program, that project is a specific below, so it's not market rate, it's all below 80%, and had tax increment finance also. So, it had additional economic or financial support. We have two other projects that are, one that is currently under construction, that is a Flylar Station, that is in the corner of Banyan and Tamarin, that is, also has state tax credit, so has additional financial support. The city gave them TDRs free of charge for the construction of the building, and they are doing 94 units, all below 80% of the AMI. The third project that is currently under bill and permit is the grant project that is going to be a mixed-use, mixed-income project. The city offered them the TDRs free of charge, but in addition, the city offered them some additional monetary contribution to help with the project. And that's going to be 103 units below 100% of the AMI. So, all these projects receive TDRs at no cost from the city, but as we say, we don't have TDRs, we are out of TDR, so we have to find another way to incentivize this construction. And again, these were basically voluntary projects. So, from the, if you do the numbers, from the 3,397 units that we built in the downtown since 2006, only 85 units are below 80% of the AMI. So definitely, we need to improve on that number if we want to provide housing for a range of incomes in the downtown. So, what we did, modifying the program, the affordable housing program, is expand the program to apply to any project proposing residential uses in the downtown that is desiring to utilize the TDR incentive program. So basically, if a developer wants to come downtown and increase, and desires to increase the development capacity and height through the use of the TDRs, they will be required to use the program, the housing incentive program. They will have to acquire the TDRs in the private market, but they will have to set aside 27% of the incentive gross building area for units below the market rate. And those units will have to be for families with income between 60 and 100% of the AMI. We also created a kind of a category from that total amount. 25% of the units will have to be at 60% AMI, 25% of the units at 80%, and the remaining of the units could be at any income level that the developer decides. The unit's mix and size shall reflect the market rate units in the project, and the units will be restricted for 20 years under these income ranges. So I'm going to run through an example of how this works. So, I'm using one building that is, was recently approved, is starting construction, is 303 Banyan, it's in the corner of Banyan and Dixie. So I'm using that as an example. They did not have to do the affordable housing program, but if they would have applied right now, they could have, they will need to do the program under these circumstances. So, I'm using this because we already have, by the developer, the mix of the units, the sizes and everything, so it helps us to run the numbers in a more accurate way. So the site is 72,372 square feet. By right, the development, that site has a 2.75 FAR that gives them 199,023 square feet of gross building area. It has an incentive allowed in there for an additional one point. So it will give, with incentive, so the TDRs that they had to purchase were 72,372 square feet. So, if we apply the proposed program, 27% of the incentive area will have to be set aside for restrictive income units, that's 19,540 square feet of gross building area. From that, we are discounting 20% for efficiency, so we are discounting for the area that is allocated to corridors and common areas. And then, the result of that, the resulting square foot, 15,632, is really the area that will have to be allocated for units. So, once we have that number, we divide that number by the average unit size proposed by the project. In this case, we're using the 800, that is the average unit size required for the downtown, the minimum, and that results in a requirement of 20 units. So, in this case, for this project, that has, we look at it, it has 271,295 square feet of development, they are required to provide 15,632 square feet, that results in 20 units to set aside. Then, those units will be split based on the split of their proposed market rate units, and split also by income level. So if we do these numbers, they have to basically provide, from those 28 studios, seven one bedrooms and five two-bedrooms. The project is proposing also three-bedroom units, but we are kind of discounting those ones because the gap between the market rate and the affordable ones is too much. So we are not requiring them to provide those ones. But if they split, they require units in the rest of the mix, they have to provide this number of units. In total, from the 203 units that they are providing, 20 have to be affordable, and that represents basically 9% of the total number of units that will have to be set aside. If we draw the numbers, they were able to obtain 52 additional units in exchange for 20 that will have to be a restricted income. It's a 36% increase in development capacity. So it's a substantial incentive for the developers, and we think it's a good incentive to offer. In addition to the development capacity increase that we are proposing through the zoning regulations, the city is proposing a complementary program to provide additional financial support to participants. And this is a program that we are working right now, that is under draft with the CRA. It will be a tax increment finance program that will basically provide or reimburse developers a percentage of their county and city portion of the ad valorem property tax generated by the project. The concept at this point is proposed as they will be eligible to receive a reimbursement of up to 30% of the county and city ad valorem tax for 10 years, but we will put a maximum of the price or value per unit, a maximum reimbursement by income of restricted unit. And that will be for every unit that they produce at 60% of the AMI, we are suggesting or recommending to reimburse $16,000 a year, so it will be $160,000 in the 10 years. For the 80% AMI units will be $12,000 a year, for $120,000 in 10 years. And for the 100% AMI will be $8,000, for a total of $80,000 in the 10 years. That is kind of in terms of the way the program works and how it is financially supported. Then, the developers have, will have three options to comply with the program. They could provide the units on-site to make it part of their project, so if they have producing, their proposal has 203 units, they can take the 20 units that we just discussed and just build it as part of their project. The unit shall be finished and match the standard finishes of the market rate units and cannot be closed or segregated. They also could opt for doing the units off-site, so they could build the units in a different building, as long as that building is built within the boundaries of the downtown area. So, we discuss, and we wanted to offer them the option. If they say they have a really high-end building that they don't want to provide below market rate units, they could build a separate project, as long as they are within the downtown area, because we still want to be able to provide the proximity to the employment for those residents. The units have to be constructed before or concurrently with the parent project, and we just have some regulation that clarifies how the timing of that will work. And the third option will be a payment in lieu. So, the developer, if they decide they don't want to, at all, to build the units on-site or off-site, they could do a contribution to the Housing Trust Fund. And basically, what we are proposing with this is the amount will be based on the per-square foot construction cost according to the International Code Council Building Valuation Data Table, which establishes the cost of construction per building type. And this is a table that is used by the building department to estimate the cost of building permits. So, by building type, so they will have to record what is the building type, and that's according with their construction type. If it is a 15-story building, it's a different building type than if it is a four-story building. But based on that, we are just charging what is reported in this table. So in this case, is for a 1B, that is the typical building type of an eight-story building in downtown, is $162.09. So if we do the numbers based on the example that I explained before, the 303 Banyan project will have to pay to the Housing Trust Fund $3,167,238 to basically do a payment in lieu and not have to provide any unit on-site. The intention with the payment in lieu was like to put the highest burden of this option, because we definitely want to get the units built, so, but we wanted to also offer the option in case. In addition to this, we also are proposing some exemptions from the zoning code for the projects that participate, things that we see the developers always ask, and they will be beneficial for them. One is, for example, not requiring guest parking for the residential portion of the project, then not requiring, if they have income restrictive units that are proposed as micro-units, that now all the projects are proposing micro-units, are really small units, they will not be required to pay the transit fee that they are required to pay, that is $10 per month per unit. We're also offering a reduction of the requirement for private open space, 25% reduction from the requirement, and 15% reduction from the public open space, and one that they always ask, because it's, the configuration of the sites downtown makes it more difficult to make the parking more efficient. We are recommending provide an active use, a reduction of the active use requirement along Primary Street for floors above the first floor. The downtown has requirements for liner uses and active uses in Primary Street, so we are proposing a reduction of 50% of that requirement. So it will be beneficial for the developer to make the parking more efficient. That is for the affordable housing, for the housing incentive program. In addition to that, we are doing other modifications to the Transfer of Development Rights Program and the special incentives that we have. We are suggesting to remove the Quadro Business District a special incentive that was located between Quadro and Rosemary, from Gardenia all the way to the county parking garage. It was a special incentive that basically provided city-owned TDRs in exchange for the construction of Class A office and full-service hotel. As Mr. Green explained, we don't need to incentivize those uses any longer, so we are suggesting to remove this incentive. We are suggesting, though, to maintain the additional development capacity, so the intensity of development is still allowed in that area, because it still is appropriate, but not offering the TDRs for the particular uses. So the developers, if they want to come and build to the maximum allowed for the incentive within that area, they will have to buy the TDRs in the private market. The city will not offer them. We're also suggesting to remove the Quadro Garden District incentive that was along Quadro Boulevard between Dixie and Quadro, for the same reasons. It's not necessary to do it, to offer any special incentives for those particular uses. Development capacity additional will remain, so they will just have to go to the private market and buy them. We are, though, maintaining the Okeechobee Business District incentive that only allows additional height for the Class A office within that district. In summary, just the incentives continue to operate through the TDR program, so we are continuing to function the same way we have been functioning with the TDR, so no increase in overall development capacity of the downtown is occurring, we are just moving from one location to another one. We just expanded the TDR receiving sites and opened the TDR receiving sites to all uses permitted, except for the OBD, as I mentioned, and with the caveat that for residential uses, if they want to use the TDR incentive, they will have to provide the units as set aside for the restricted income. That concludes the presentation. Staff recommends approval for Planning Board Case 1882A based on the finding that the proposed amendment complies with all the amendment standards found in Section 9432 of the zoning and land development regulations. We're here in front of you today. The Downtown Action Committee reviewed this proposal last week at their June hearing and recommended approval 7-0 of this. We are proposing to take this amendment to the city commission for first hearing on July 12, 2021. And as I mentioned, we have been discussing these proposals with developers and kind of doing changes as we get feedback from them. That, it's all, so we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of staff on this proposal?
I just want to say that you did a great job. That's very complicated. You made it seem very simple.
Good, that's good. Thank you.
I think, I want to give you a big compliment to you and Rick for how far we've come with affordable housing and incorporating that into developments to where we started, I don't know, two years ago, three years ago. You've come a fantastic way forward to ensure that we have adequate housing for people in the downtown area. I think it's admirable what you've done so far.
I am also impressed with the changes that have been brought forward for the affordable housing. It has been lacking, and you all did a fantastic job with this presentation.
And I also think it makes sense that we pull away some of the incentives for areas we no longer need in favor of areas we really do need, so it made sense to us. I would invite anyone from the public to come forward, please, please.
The ghost, the ghost of Commissioner's pass.
All right. Hearing nothing more from the public, is there any other discussions or concerns, or should we call it for a vote? We're going to need you, Peter. Looking for a motion, my friend.
I'll move planning case number 1882A based on the findings that the proposed amendment complies with all the amendment standards found in Sections 94-32 of the zoning and land development regulations.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage and abstain. Congratulations. All right, that brings us to our last case, co-revision case 2105. I understand Ms. Van has promised to keep this to a relatively brief presentation. Just trying, all this talk of incentivizing, I thought I would kind of get on the bandwagon.
All right, Angela Van, planning and zoning administrator for CRC, case number 2105. This is a city-initiated request that's been in the making a long time, 2014 that we started working on this text amendment with various planners and ended up with me in the end to try to get it through, meaning our zoning code to make a reasonable accommodations that comply with the Federal Housing Act for group homes, community residential homes, residential communities, sober homes, you name it in that category. And as you remember, over the years, as the United States and the city at one time struggled to win the war on drugs, alcohol abuse, and one of the weapons, essential weapons that was used was recovery residents or sober homes. Some was used, some was abused over time, as you saw with some of the insurance companies and the operators basically using that part of it. In 2018, the city hired the law offices of Daniel Lover to do an analysis of the city's current regulations. He's done regulations of Pompano, D.R.A., actually, he's doing for the county right now, so trying to, basically, everybody's changing their code to make sure we mainly comply with affordable housing and fair housing requirements. And opposed to amendments, you saw with the thick packet you got, emailed the report that he gave to us, and this, the regulations are based on the report that he did and the findings that he did. Just to give you, just a quick, the way we regulate group homes right now is a group home type 1, 2, 3, and 5. That's how we regulate it today. Type 1 is basically technically regulated by state statutes. It allows somebody with six or less to go into just about any residential area, as long as you're not within 1,000 square feet of another one. And that's state statute, state allows them to do that. And that's basically, you have your, most of that we see today is elderly care, elderly homes, that's what we mostly see that for. Type 2 is the same thing, you may have also for kids, but that's a 1,200-foot separation, and that goes usually in your multifamily neighborhood. Type 3 today would be ACLFs, your larger-scale ACLFs, and then we consider type 5 as your detox, actually facility, your car, your handling hazeron type facilities. And basically, type 1 would basically go away from our code, we'd just do what state statute requires. 1 and 2, 3 we're going to keep, and 4 we're going to change the name of it. Currently, sober homes, the way we regulate them today, is permitted in any zoning district that permits residential. There are no dis- separation requirements today. There are no distance separation requirements today. Any home with three or more unrelated individuals, because that's what our code requires right now in the city code, requires a reasonable accommodation in order to see that number. And we usually base the industry standards, number of people, based on bathroom. So you get four persons for bathroom and that's usually the industry standard for a community residential home, that's what you're supposed to say, not an actual sober home, community residential home. At one point, we had a hundred and thirty-seven that was doing the boom and ten of those were located downtown. We're down to thirty that we know of. It's licensed by the city, they have a reasonable accommodation. You have some out there that, you have a couple apartment buildings that have it, but they only have less than three people in an apartment. So technically, they're just a rental license, because it's less than three or less. So, and we have ten that we know are certified by the state. And it's important to note that, and I talked about the six-person elderly foster homes and homes with special needs kids are not regularly by state statute and don't fall under these requirements. They just have to do the distance separation. So, just to get to the proposed new language, basically what we're going to do is break it down into three categories: family, transitional, and recovery. A family, basically, community residence is a permanent, kind of a permanent living environment. They usually stay there for a year, most of them are there for about a year. Residency is not treatment. They're basically, when they get to the family, usually they've been through all the programs. They've been through detox, they've been to transitional, and now they're in a family home where they get stable, they basically have somebody, you know, curfew, they get a job, and basically get back into society. Transitional is basically when you basically come from a detox, but you still need that little bit of support, so you're just like one step down. CARP had, and just to give you an example, CARP used to have, when you went to detox, then they had another bill and you went to, was over transition, you still need somebody to watch over you a little more. You're still taking a little medicine, but basically, and this is short-term, you're probably there for maybe ninety days till you really get to the point where you could transition into a family, community residence. And the last one is recovery community. And also, we have a couple in the city, you probably wouldn't know it, I'm not going to get into where they are, but whereas it's apartment complexes for the most part, but they only rent it for people who are recovering in their programs, only the people they rent to. They go in there, they still have some of the meetings of help there, but it's only for people who are in recovery phase and the last phase of that. And basically, and it's the general public, like I said, that. Most of these are multifamily districts, the other two could be in a single-family district. And all three permitted also in the DNP area. And again, as I talked about, we're going to do a new category, adult conduit living facility, which are for your elderly care, and you can see they're permitted in most of our districts in the cities. You can see in OC, POR, NCGC, and within some of our multifamily districts. And we're getting a new category, inpatient detoxification treatment center. It goes from a group home type five to that, which is basically what it says, is inpatient, where they usually are from, anyway, from a week to a month, it depends on what type of program they're in. Right now, they're permitted in most districts, urban core and downtown, and we're actually expanding it. Today, it's only allowed in CS and GC, but because of Fair Housing Act and all that other stuff, we are expanding this. It used to be allowed in office commercial, professional office residential, neighborhood commercial, but it's all still with approval for Class B special use permit. So they would need a permit from the zoning motor appeals in order to go into those areas. Just to give you a quick rundown, you can see I didn't, not going to go through all those regulations and a lot of that is just changing texts and permit use table, which makes that, and parking, which makes that so long. Family traditionals, a maximum ten residents, six-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation. And as you read in the report, we did that because that constitutes a block, per se, in the city. So that's basically only one per block, basically what it equates to. And then it has to be licensed by the certified by the state of Florida. Same for recovery community, there's no maximum number of residents, because it's based on, most of these are apartment complexes, so it's based on that. It's a twelve-hundred-foot separation between all community residents and they must be licensed and certified by the state of Florida. Adult cognitive living facility, we had a lot of regulations in there and we kind of got rid of a lot of those, we're just saying that it's based on life safety code and then underlying on density, because some of these also have apartments and some don't. So it just depends on what that is. And a six-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation in an inpatient detoxification treatment center, again, based on life safety code, number of people can sit in there. And then also six-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation from another inpatient detoxification treatment center. And that's the brief rundown of it, didn't want to get too detailed, because if you read all that stuff after a while, it's all sound alike. Trust me, I've been doing this, trying to go through this code amendment for about three years and I tell you, I've read it eight times and found something new, I keep reading it. But that recommends approval of code revision case number twenty-one oh-five and approvals based on the findings that the petition meets all the eight required amendment standards found in Section ninety-four thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulations. I would ask any questions you may have.
I'll start out. Just from the thirty-thousand-foot view, I understand that we're modernizing this and making more sense of it, logical classifications. The net-net effect of all this, what do you think will be? Because you said part of it is, is we're expanding maybe other areas because we may be required by federal law to do so. So what's the net effect of what we're doing here tonight will have?
Well, again, as we've seen over time, a lot of it slowed down. I mean, you know, during the boom, we'd be getting maybe two to three in a week of reasonable accommodations. From that standpoint, they've slowed down tremendously, based on industry standards or based on the insurance companies regulating them more and not giving out free money like they were at one point in time. From the larger ones, detoxification in the larger ones, I mean, we have some. I have, Broadway is a popular spot for them, the older hotels, they convert those to come in. Distance requirements are still there, but again, that's actually a better spot for them when you talk about detoxification, because you're not out running around. You're basically in a facility and then once you go there, you go to another one. That's why it's difficult to regulate the ones in the residential. That's why we're doing the six-hundred-and-sixty distance separation, because right now, we're trying to limit it to one per block. The south end probably got more than the north end, just the scale of the homes. And you had two and three per block, because somebody would go in and buy two, three homes and turn them into this type of facility. So with the new regulations, it's actually going to limit that use to going in and basically concentrating in a residential, on a residential block. To that effect, it's actually going to help limit them from going in.
So while we're expanding it, you're saying it's going to be just more equitable?
Equitable, we had to, we had to expand the reasonable accommodation for inpatient detoxification center, because we allow for the type-three group homes, the larger ACLFs. So technically, if you allow ACLFs in that particular district, why don't you allow inpatient detoxification centers? It's kind of not the same, but, so that's why we did that.
We're bringing more compliance, we believe, with federal law.
Yes, more compliance with federal requirements. Yes, and it still requires a public hearing, so you're still going, it's not by rights. So still have a public hearing, Class B, going through the whole process.
Okay, all right. Anyone have any other questions?
I have a short one. Tell me a little bit about supply and demand. I mean, is the problem getting worse and accommodations are getting less? What's been happening?
Well, right now, we've seen, I don't know, supply and demand, whether people are still out there or not, but we're not seeing as many. And again, that goes back to when this first sober home craze started back in, what, two thousand and sixteen, seventeen? The opioid and all that type, and people were just opening them up. I mean, they were left and right. And the insurance companies were paying good money, left and right. And it got to the point where a lot of the insurance companies got to the point where they started strictly regulating them. So you can't go in a sober home, because when you're in a sober home, you're still supposed to get a urine test weekly. And they were doing urine tests on top of urine tests and billing the insurance companies. So now the insurance companies, the legitimate ones out there, your paperwork has to be in order. You have so much you have to do now, you know, in order to get paid for that person or paid for the urine test or paid for that tenant in there now. So that helped a lot when the insurance industry's kind of pulled back and tightening their regulations. Also, as you see, Dave Amber had, in Palm Beach County, had a task force. And part of their job was to go out and deal with some of the sober homes. You saw some of the bigger arrests, I think you've seen over time, last couple of years, with some of the larger quote-unquote people who run and have like twenty, thirty homes. And they've gone in for insurance fraud, for different things like that. So I think that has helped narrow it down, it's not as, we don't get them like that anymore. We may get one or two a month right now. That's where we are now, one or two a month for the sober homes, for the smaller ones. And again, land is especially in West Palm Beach, you're going to get apartment complex and, you know, only rented to recovering, people recovering, recovering addicts, but recovering. So it's kind of expensive now for land to do that. So you get more money for renting an apartment, just general. So, yeah, right now, it basically has almost come to, that we know of, I'm sure they're out there and it's something that's illegal, not, you know, but what we know of, like I say, is it's almost slowed down to, we have thirty now in the city from a hundred and thirty-seven.
Wow.
It seems that the Airbnb's have replaced the sober homes, because they are all over my neighborhood.
You are correct.
And I don't, what, is there, has there been any study about whether, how that affects a neighborhood in a good or bad way?
About Airbnb or these type of?
Or an Airbnb. Oh, I can imagine sober homes are not good for neighborhoods.
Talk to your legislature up there in Tallahassee. They kind of tied our, tied most municipalities' hands on that. No, a lot we can do to regulate them.
They preempted that on the state level, so they kind of denied localities the ability to regulate that.
Yeah, they've regulated us out of, most governments out of that, so.
They have a good lobby. All right, is there any other questions? And if not, let's call the question. Looking for a motion.
Okay, I move for approval of code revision. I move for approval of code revision case twenty-one oh-five.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, unprompted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passage and abstain, congratulations. Great job, Angela. All right, that now brings us to unfinished business, other business, new business?
Just such, you know, we have a new planning board member, Kathleen Ward, so she will start next month. She comes to us from the nuisance abatement board, I think they kind of took her from there, because we needed members.
Now, Sam?
She couldn't refuse.
Yeah, we've been talking about maybe that there's a process by which we may be revising the requirements that our members be electors, which may open the opportunity, maybe even some of our prior members had to leave because of the residents, some could come back. We'll be selective, who, though?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Rick Green, Development Services Director. Again, subsequent to what happened earlier this month, we had a, we have a weekly meeting with the law department and I brought that issue up with Nancy Urcheck and Kimberly Rothenberg. So that's something we're going to be pursuing, just like Angela brought back the group home legislation, where, as I mentioned earlier, to you, we're going to bring back another amendment to Article Two. And that section of the code discusses how we administer the boards and we want to do them equally, you know, with regard to attendance and all that. So like our Downtown Action Committee, we don't require that you be a resident, but you be a property owner, business owner. So we're going to pursue that same line.
I just want to be clear, if someone, let's say someone worked in an office tower downtown, which is a lot of people, would they be eligible under the new proposed rules?
We'd have to sit down with law and flush that out. I mean, typically.
Because I think, just my own two cents on this, I think you'll lose a lot of people. You know, just because, when I think about it, if you're talking about the actual people who own the structures where the business is located, that's a much smaller pool than the people who are working here. What we want is familiarity and commitment to the community. And whether they're renting space or owning space, that should not be a factor.
Yeah, but business owners encompasses a lot of people downtown.
Right, but I think.
Not necessarily real estate owners.
So it's not, thank you for that. So they can be a business owner, but they don't have to own the property where their business is located?
Correct.
Okay, I misunderstood that, thank you. Do we all, are we all in agreement here? That we would like them to revisit those rules? So if anyone ever moved out of the city limits but still worked in the city?
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, we're bringing it forward, so you'll be seeing.
I didn't know whether it was helpful for you to get something from us.
No, no, we've already decided. This is a need we have, so we're going to bring it forward. And again, we've already begun those discussions with our law department.
All right, we appreciate that and support your efforts. Oh, good, good, good. All right, if not anything else, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.